...of the Revealing Truth Church. If you please stand.
So if you'd like, just close your eyes and take a minute and a deep breath. And know that we're here to do the greater good for the Lancaster Planning Commission, which means for the Lancaster city and the citizens of it. We're guided by that divine intelligence that operates in and around and through each of us at every moment, wherever and however we are. As we take a breath at any moment and listen to that divine guidance within, we know we're headed in the right direction. And we're out of the mind of the ego human that operates within us, and we're just listening to spirit, its guidance, and accepting its protection as we move forward to do the evening's work. Thank you, God, for your blessings. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. If you'd please face the flag and join me in the renewal to the pledge to our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You know, there is no comma between... It's one phrase. "One nation under God." And with that lecture, we'll have the roll call.
Commissioners Larry Burkey.
Here.
Cassandra Harvey.
Here.
Dana Haycock.
Here.
Dan Jacobs Sampson.
Raj Molly.
Here.
Vice Chair Sandy Smith. Chairman James Vos.
I'm here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay through the entire meeting due to extenuating circumstances, a total of 10 minutes is provided at this time during which input may be given regarding agenda items. Individual speakers would be limited to two minutes each. Do we have any early speakers?
No, it doesn't appear in the address.
All right. Thank you. Any person wishing to address the Planning Commission on any agendized item is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary and identify the agenda item you would like to discuss. Each person will be given an opportunity to address the commission at the time the item is discussed by the Planning Commission. Speaker's cards are available at the rear of the chambers. Individual speakers will be limited then to three minutes each. First item on our agenda is our consent calendar, which is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 15, 2010.
I move approval of the regular meeting of the Lancaster Planning Commission of March 15, 2010.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please vote. Apparently, our screen does not reflect the vote tonight, but the clerk has that information, I believe.
The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. All right. The next item is item number two. This is a continued public hearing. General Plan Amendment 0407, Zone Change 0408, Tentative Track Map Number 62759, and we have a recommendation of denial without prejudice before us. So without objection, the public hearing is open on this matter. And do we have any speaker cards on this item?
No, we do not.
All right. Anyone care to hear a staff report on this item? None? All right, then. Without objection, the public hearing is closed. And could we have a motion, please?
I recommend that we adopt Resolution Number 1008, denying General Plan Amendment 04-07, Zone Change 04-08, and Tentative Track Map Number 62759 without prejudice.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. The next item is our new public hearings. Conditional Use Permit Number 8815. The applicant is the Lancaster Redevelopment Agency and AV Auto Mall Associates. And we have a presenter on this item. Without objection, the public hearing is open. And Mr. Lawson, I believe?
Yes, Chairman Vos, members of the Planning Commission. We have a request tonight for you to consider amending the master CUP in the auto mall to include the sales and leasing of recreation vehicles. In these tough economic times, we're doing everything we can to keep the auto mall as vital as it's been. And we're under negotiations with a couple of parties that are interested in the possibility of selling recreation vehicles in the auto mall. I'm not at liberty to disclose those negotiations, otherwise I would. But this is an item that's already been put to a vote of the holders of the CCNRs in the auto mall, which are all the auto dealers themselves, and was unanimously approved. So our recommendation would be to follow that and amend the CUP. The redevelopment agency is acting as the applicant in this case. That's why I'm before you this evening. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions? All right. Do we have any speakers on this item?
No, we do not.
All right, then. Without objection, the public hearing is closed. And consider a motion on the matter.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 1015, approving Conditional Use Permit Number 8815 amended.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. The next item is Conditional Use Permit 0707. The applicant is Set of the Sale LLC. And the recommendation is to deny the Conditional Use Permit without prejudice. The public hearing is open on this matter. Do we... Let's see. Does anyone care to hear a staff report on it? No? All right. Do we have any speakers on the matter?
No, we do not.
No, we do not. Okay. So then, without objection, the public hearing is closed. And consider a motion before us.
I move the motion to adopt Resolution Number 10-11, denying Conditional Use Permit Number 07-07 without prejudice.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Next item is item number five, Conditional Use Permit Number 0902. The applicant is Apostolic New Life Ministry, Inc. And the recommendation is to deny the Conditional Use Permit without prejudice. Anyone care to hear a staff report on this item?
We do have two speaker cards, one opposing and one, it looks like, favoring.
All right. Then we'll hear a staff report on this, then, please.
Good evening, Chairman Vos, Commissioners. The applicant is Apostolic New Life Ministry, and the location is on approximately 0.92 acres located on 7th Street East, just north of Avenue K8. The request is for construction of a 4,881 square foot addition to an existing church in the R7,000 zone. This does require a Conditional Use Permit. Staff is recommending denial of the Conditional Use Permit due to a lack of response from the applicant to move forward with the project that had been submitted more than a year ago. And due to the inactivity, that's the reason for the recommendation of denial.
Denial without prejudice means that the applicant may refile, complete application, and complete the process?
The applicant has that option.
If they choose.
Right.
Nice. And it's typical of... We've heard a number of, through the past several months, a number of applications that have been denied without prejudice because of inactivity, for whatever the reason, but...
Right. And staff has tried to contact the applicant several instances as laid out in the staff report.
All right. Making the recommendation and assuming... Can't assume what the Commission will do, but it certainly is... The intent is not to limit the opportunity for religious organizations to expand their facilities in the community. That's not the intent at all. It's to streamline the process, that applicants make timely application, complete the environmental documents.
Correct. And the city does have an obligation to move projects forward and to complete, you know, the application process in a timely manner.
All right. Very good. Anyone else have any questions before we hear the speakers? All right. Thank you. So the public hearing is still open. May we hear from the speakers, please?
Okay. The first person is Scott McDonald, and he's opposing the project.
Scott McDonald? Yes. Good evening, sir, and welcome. Come right up here to the podium, and you have your three minutes.
My concern was just having a large building of that sorts in a neighborhood that's basically residential, and the impact of parking and events during the week at a building that says is residential. I live directly to the west of that property, and I was concerned about possibly looking at the back of what might be the backside of a strip mall-type building. So I'm just concerned, that's all.
Did I complete your statement?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
The next person is Josh Mann. Says item number 1005. Wrong item?
Yeah.
Okay. Cynthia Spears.
So who's the speaker on this? I'm sorry?
Cynthia Spears.
Ms. Spears, evening. Welcome. Don't need to hurry. We'll be here as long as you want to be.
Good evening, panel. I'm just here on behalf of Apostolic New Life Ministry and to say that I am for the church growing and the services that we are providing in the community. And we are aware that it is a residential area. And at this time, all we can do is expand in that location, and we are giving back to the community. We are reducing crime in the community by having a church there on Wednesdays. We're there for Bible study. So we're kind of keeping out, so to speak, the bad element with just our presence being in that area. And we are just looking forward to growing and serving our community.
You do understand what the recommendation before us is to deny the Conditional Use Permit, mainly because of lack of progress on the applicant's part? The applicant being the Apostolic New Life Ministry, Inc. So you represent that organization?
Sir, I'm a member in the organization. My pastor is here, and I think that there has... may have been some miscommunication with the individuals that were supposed to communicate regarding the project and the Conditional Use Permit.
I see. Well, depending on the vote of the Commission, there's always an opportunity to file a complete application and complete the process. And that young man sitting right there on the corner is the fellow that you want to talk to when we're done.
Should we do it after the meeting?
That would be the best way to do it. You bet.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other speakers?
The next speaker is Pastor Casey Marsh.
Pastor Marsh, was it? Yes. Good evening. Welcome.
I'm the pastor of New Life Community Church, but it's been numerous times that I have tried to contact the city in regards to what we're trying to do.
Could you speak into the microphone? I can't.
It's been numerous times that I've tried to contact you guys in order to get the project going forward. We've just been waiting for about over a year, and we came down here. I think I've seen her before, and I never talked to you. And there was another person involved, and I don't even have that with me. So I was just shocked to hear that you guys are trying to reach me, when I've been trying to reach you a bunch of times. And I've just been patient and wondering why it takes so long to get a Conditional Use Permit, and you guys said you were backed up. And so to hear this now as if it was my negligence is kind of offensive. But if we can move forward, because Charles Brown is an architect, still is an architect, and I forget the... I just forgot the other person that helped us also with sending out the information to get the Conditional Use Permit. So this is the first I've heard that you guys are trying to reach us. It's our intentions to grow a church, and of course, you know, everything's very expensive. We're right now having services at a school on Challenger and K2 because we are growing our building. Now, during the week, we have services at the site now on Wednesdays between 7:00 and 8:30. And so it's our intention definitely to move forward because it's very costly right now. We're paying two notes at the school and also at the spot on 7th Streets. And so this is the first I've heard of that. And like I say, I came down here numerous of times and tried to... and brought all the information you guys needed here, and this is the last... this is the first time I'm hearing that we have been negligent in our part. And so, again, I know it's not nobody's fault, but that's kind of offensive to me when I want to move forward.
The last contact, according to our staff report, was April 8, 2009, was the last time anyone from the applicant's side met with the city. On February 11, 2010, there was a certified letter sent to the applicant. Are you saying you didn't get that?
I don't have it.
You didn't receive that?
No, sir.
May I ask the address? Your address, sir? Mr.?
That's me?
Yes, sir.
43233, 7th Street East. But I probably gave you my... our business address is 22 West Avenue K, number 679. That's on the paperwork.
I don't know. I'm just curious what the address is so they can look at it.
That's like a rural area, and most of them, we don't send mail to that box. It's on the outside. We also always send it to 22 West Avenue K, number 679. It's a P.O. box.
So what are you asking us to do? Is not do anything?
No. I'm asking you to not deny it, and so we can go forward.
You understand the process, and let me see if I can explain it to you.
I understand the process also. I'm trying to understand. I've been doing this for over a year.
Excuse me, sir.
Yeah.
Let me explain to you. If the city does not move an application along, then there is a good chance that it could be approved for lack of progress, which doesn't give us the opportunity to properly evaluate the project. One of the main elements of this project is an environmental review, which has never been done. And it's our understanding that the applicant has been charged with that responsibility. We've not received an environmental review, and based on that and the lack of progress since April 2009, the recommendation before us is to deny it without prejudice, which means that you could... you can revive the project first thing tomorrow morning at 8:30 if you choose to do that.
How long... how much longer are we going to wait again?
It's up to you. You're the applicant. The city has a process. You must conform to the process. There are requirements under the city ordinance that you must comply with. I'm not going to sit here and negotiate it with you. I'm just telling you, there's a process. You have to follow the steps. You need to either do it yourself or hire a professional that knows how to do it. We're not opposed to... we... I'm speaking for myself, but collectively, we're not opposed to religious organizations establishing themselves in the community. But in a residential zone, a church requires a Conditional Use Permit. It's routine. So it's a routine process. There's nothing onerous about it. We don't intend to make it burdensome, but there are some minimum standards, and one of them is an environmental review, which I'm sure you'd agree is important to everyone in the community that we concern ourselves with the environmental impacts. So that's a minimum standard, one of the minimum standards. So I don't know what the outcome's going to be, but we appreciate your comments.
And I did hire a professional. I thought that was already done, but you're saying it's not done.
The last communications that was sent to the applicant was for submission of revised site plans. I would recommend that the applicant get in touch with the engineer that was last in contact with staff and find out why site plans need to be revised and what the holdup is. But the staff is waiting for revised site plans from the applicant. So, you know, if you choose to move forward with this, you would, you know, submit site plans according to the revisions that staff last asked for.
So that's where we're at?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So do I need to see you?
The planner that had worked on this was Randy Davis, and you can contact her to move forward, should you choose to.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Before we leave, I'm just confused. Who is Randy?
I beg your pardon?
Before we move forward, I'm confused what we're doing. Who is Randy?
Randy was the case planner on the project.
Uh-huh.
Randy Davis.
Randy Davis.
Okay.
She's in the planning department.
All right. Just come back and see her tomorrow morning?
Yes.
Excuse me, sir. If you'd address your comments to the chair, we'd appreciate that. Thank you very much. We have a process here. It's kind of like a Conditional Use Permit application. We follow a process here.
What chair do I...
Randy Davis is the project, is the staffer that you would want to contact. That's the one that's handled this project from the beginning. I'm surprised you didn't know that. But at any rate, sir, we appreciate your comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
I had a quick question for Pastor Marsh. How are you?
Fine. Thank you, sir.
Been a while since I've talked to you. You were saying that you've been trying to contact the city for the last year?
Yes, sir.
How were you trying to contact the city?
I came down here personally, and they kept telling me, said, "The process is going to take a while. We just haven't got to you guys yet. Just be patient." And we just... and as far as I know, we gave them everything they needed. So this is the first time I heard that we're still lacking something. And we did hire... we hired Charles Brown. I forget the... just right now, I just forget the other company that we hired that did the... sent the letters out to get the Conditional Use Permit going.
Okay. And Pastor Marsh, have you been involved in this process since the beginning?
Yes, sir.
And I'm confused as to why you weren't aware that these requirements were still pending.
Because I don't have anything.
You didn't know?
No, sir.
Okay. If we were to approve this, denying the project... Chune, can I ask you a quick question? What additional costs would be put on the church to restart this project if we start it over?
I'll defer to Sopia.
He would have to pay the entire cost of the Conditional Use Permit, which is about $7,000.
Okay. And Pastor Marsh, are you in a position right now to move forward with this project if you're given 30 to 60 days?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And help me to have confidence with that. How would that take place? How would you do that?
What do you mean, "how would take"? We would pay $7,000?
No, no, no. If right now, if we did not approve this, your project would not be denied.
Okay.
Okay? If we were to extend this for another 60 days and allow you to work on this project to try to save you that $7,000?
Yes, sir.
Would you take action and make it happen in the next 30 to 60 days?
Yes, sir, I will.
Okay. And how would you do that?
I would go down to the people that we hired that was helping us with the Conditional Use Permit and get it moving. I'd come see Randy, the AV engineer... oh, AV engineer, that's who helps out, AV engineer.
So there would be no problem with getting a revised site plan?
No, sir. I'd go see them. I already paid them, so I'm sure they would be willing to help us.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have any other speakers on this matter?
No, we do not.
All right, then. Without objection, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Deputy City Attorney? If it's the Commission's pleasure to continue this matter for a period of time, what does that do with the status of the Conditional Use Permit application?
I don't believe that that would have any effect on the application, particularly because under the circumstances, it's the applicant requesting the extension in lieu of the Commission denying the application. So the applicant is not only consenting to the extension, but is actually requesting it. So I don't believe that would have any adverse effect.
All right. Thank you. There's no risk of entitlement by extending the... or continuing the matter for a period of time without proper review?
That's correct. There's not.
There is not? Okay. Great. Terrific. Thank you. All right. So the public hearing is closed. Any other comments or questions from anyone?
My only question would be, if we were to continue this, would it be postponement or a continuation?
Depends what your motion is, I suppose.
In the past, we've had projects that we have postponed making a decision as a Commission for 30, 60, 90 days. I'm assuming that would be the correct way to handle this, to give them additional time if we saw fit.
Just one moment, please. After discussing the matter with Ms. Donovan, it would probably be prudent to simply submit the matter back to staff, considering there is an issue in terms of material from the applicant. It would be difficult to predict when that may come in, and that could affect potential renoticing and the costs associated with that. So it may be most prudent to just refer the matter back to staff and have staff put it back on the agenda when the material is received from the applicant.
All right. So are you ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion that we refer the item back to staff.
Do you have a second?
A second, then.
Thank you, Mr. Burkey. Mr. Molly? Any further discussion? Please vote.
I do have one thing. If we send it back to staff, the project has to be renoticed at the applicant's cost. So we need to add that in our recommendation.
Well...
Do you know approximately what that cost is?
I do not. Sorry.
It's less than $7,000 on the...
I'd say it's approximately $1,200, but yes, it's a little bit less.
Okay.
Well, either way, if it comes back as a public hearing for an approval, it has to be noticed. If we deny it and he applies again, it has to be noticed. If we refer it back to staff and it comes back to it, it has to be noticed. No matter what, it has to be noticed, unless we continue the matter. But it's my... and we can't continue something like this indefinitely, can we?
No.
So it has to be renoticed.
I'm assuming, though, if we were to approve this, denying the project, that part of that $7,000 pays for the renotice.
If you were to approve the denial, the applicant loses all the money.
So the motion is to refer the matter back to staff. Do you want to amend that in any way?
So I'm assuming the amendment needs to be... I will make a motion to refer the item back to staff with the cost of renoticing being the burden of the applicant.
Second.
Okay. So you're amending your motion to refer it back to staff with the cost of noticing to be the burden of the applicant. Right?
Right.
And that's... and you agree to that as a second.
That's my thing.
So you're going to have to rewind the clock so we can vote on this properly. Okay. Everybody understand the motion? Please vote. Please vote.
The motion carries 5-0.
All right. Thank you. Okay, the next item is Conditional Use Permit 1-0-04, which is a conditional use permit. The applicant is Crosspoint Development, and the request is, was for, is for a type 21 off-sale general beer, wine, and distilled spirits for a primary off-sale alcohol beverage at an existing mini-mart with gasoline sales in a CPD zone. And you have the recommendation before you. Without objection, the public hearing is open. We have speakers on this matter?
Yes, we do.
So, may we have a staff report, please?
Okay. Chairman votes and commissioners. The, currently, the applicant and the owner of the existing 2,250 square foot mini-mart with gasoline sales is requesting a conditional use permit to allow the off-sale of alcoholic beverages, to include beer, wine, distilled spirits, due to their request being a substantial change in the mode and character of the current operation, and therefore requires a CUP. Let me change this. The project is located on Avenue H and 10th Street West. The per, the proposed business is currently considered a mini-market by code and could not be considered a convenience market due to the sale of alcohol. The store does not, and the store does not devote a minimum of 10% of the overall floor area to the display of fresh meat and produce. The applicant's floor plan indicates 80 square feet of, of sales floor area would be utilized for the sale and display of alcoholic beverages. The applicant states there are two reasons for the request, the addition of alcohol sales to the site will provide convenience to the surrounding residents within walking or short driving distance, and has requested a waiver from the distance requirements of the ordinance as well as meat, as well as to help the mini-mart and gasoline station meet its financial obligations. Staff is recommending denial of the request because it does not meet the distance requirements of the alcoholic beverage establishment and would adversely affect the nearby residents. There's a couple issues here. When the project came before the Planning Commission on April 21st, 2008, the neighbors were concerned with the sale of alcohol. The applicant had responded to the neighbor that there would be no alcohol sales. Two, the mini-mart has separation requirements that cannot be met by the existing use. Staff does not believe the benefits provided to the community from a convenience standpoint outweigh the negative factors. The Sheriff Department has indicated a concern for public safety associated with the proposed request. There have been a total of 99 crimes committed within half-mile radius during the last six months of operation, between September 09 and February 10. And the sheriffs also have concerns with the close proximity to the residents and the existing sale of gasoline on the premises. Staff does not, that staff does feel there is a need, oh, excuse me, staff does not feel there is a need and does not support the applicant's request to allow the primary off-sale of alcohol beverages at the existing mini-mart and gas station. So, staff is recommending, two, the Planning Commission, denial of the project. That concludes my report, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, there may be some. Does anyone have any questions, staff, before we hear from the applicant? All right, we have an applicant present that'd like to address this, I'm assuming.
I don't have a speaker's card.
Are you the applicant, sir?
Yes.
All right, and please state your name, and, and when you're finished with your comments, I'd like you to fill out a speaker's card, so, we can have record of who you are, sir?
Yes.
Could you say who you are?
Yeah, good evening, my name is Mike Cohen.
All right.
I'm officer and partner of Crosspoint Development LLC, present with me is a partner and officer of the company, Roniona, and some employees of the company as well, including the manager, William Hartman. Before I give my very short speech, I don't think our, we are responsible for the high crime rate, I think since we came, I don't have the exact statistics, but since we opened our business in January, it seems practical that probably our presence would have reduced the crime, but I hope that the final decision would not be based on the number of crime in the area, because this is a territory that belongs to the sheriff and law enforcement. I would like to thank the members of the Planning Commission for your time in giving us the opportunity to present the application for the Conditional Use Permit, CUP, for alcohol license. Thank the staff members of the City of Lancaster who have worked diligently with us for several years for this and other entitlements, and for processing tonight's CUP. And last but not least, to the residents of Lancaster for being present here tonight. We opened part of our shopping center in January of this year. Because of the extreme economic recession, our funding from the lender was interrupted for several months and several times at the time, each time during construction. Funding was resumed later, but at a slower pace and higher cost. We were only able to complete the small portion of the project, the gas station and the convenience store. We have bigger plans to build a 10,000 square foot strip center and also a fast food restaurant. Our customers are very happy that we have opened for business, they are asking us to provide a larger variety of products in the store, ranging from certain food items, snacks, pet foods, healthcare items, among others. Many are asking for alcohol products as well. These customers tell us that they have to drive out of way to other locations within the city to purchase these products. While we are expanding our product line to satisfy customer demands, we are not able to sell alcohol because we don't have the license. We're losing ability to serve a large base of customers. Therefore, we kindly request your support for approving a CUP for the food mart to sell alcohol for the following justifications. One, we believe that the sale of alcohol will serve a specific need of the community. It is consistent with the City of Lancaster plans, design, and construction of the peripheral loop, including West Avenue H. The archery would help to reduce the unnecessary side trips and reduce flow of traffic to the interior of the city limits if the people can be served on the loop. This establishment is zoned commercial, intended to serve that need and purpose of the city planners. Two, we believe that the existing building setbacks, stringent training of employees, and numerous security cameras will prevent any adverse effects the distance waiver may have on the adjacent properties, uses, or residents. The establishment will not sell alcoholic beverages in single containers and will ensure that there will be no loitering. Furthermore, we already have license for tobacco sales, and our employees thoroughly check-proof H identifications, and on occasions have refused sales to adults suspected of purchasing tobacco for minors. Three, the shopping center is operated hands-on by the officers. We are here nearly every day, our employees are highly qualified. The manager, William Hartman, has more than 14 years' experience managing up to 13 gas stations for a major national corporation. He never had a case of alcohol violation. There are also other employees with extensive experience working for other gas stations, convenience stores, or running their own businesses. Four, to the best of our knowledge, there are neither schools nor churches nor other places of worship in the 300-foot radius of the establishment, the threshold value is established by the City of Lancaster, or even 1,000-foot radius for this matter. Within the radius of 300 feet from the boundary, there are approximately 50 residential houses that are impacted. This is calculation according to the City of Lancaster. My calculation shows me there are 31 residential houses. Also, to the north of the property, there's undeveloped land, zoned as heavy industry. In effect, all residential areas are fully developed, and we don't see a possibility that there will be more residential properties being built in the future that can be impacted by this CUP. Five, clearly, we maintain strong and established guidelines for operating a solid business, strictly following appropriate government codes and regulations. We are open 24/7, since we opened in January, we have had no safety issues. Our customers are very pleased with our presence, and we receive a lot of positive feedbacks. Our resident neighbors are truly magnificent and welcoming, and we believe that they have a sense of pride and ownership in the center. Some of them have their sons, daughters, husbands, wives, or friends employed in the center. Six, and I have two more. We believe that approval for the sale of alcohol at this location will not result in an overall increase in the volume or of alcohol sale or consumption in the city, or increased crime in the area. Based on customer comments, we understand that lack of sale of alcohol at this location would not stop them from driving elsewhere to farther distances to purchase alcohol. Seven, also, we are located just a few hundred feet from the City of Lancaster Maintenance Yard to the east. City employees off and officials constantly drive by the shopping center. We are a high, in a highly visible corner. We appreciate the fact that the city helps to keeps its eyes on the center, and we are just one phone call away, or visit away, and to respond to any concerns or comments. Finally, therefore, on behalf of the company and supporting customers and neighboring residents, I want to thank you for your time and consideration of this application. We request your support and vote to allow us to sell alcohol on the premises. We are open to discussing suggestions or recommendations you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. And for the record, we did receive some correspondence from the speaker dated March 24, 2010, in advance of the meeting. All right. Do we have other speakers?
Dolores Barnett.
I'm sorry, what was the name?
Dolores Barnett.
Oh, Ms. Barnett.
I know in that area, there's nothing, especially since the Viarda moved down there, there's nothing local that's in that area for anybody to shop for anything. Everything's, a lot of the stores in the, the, up there on Avenue I and 10th Street West have closed down. And this is something new that's in there, and like you were mentioning, the, the, the maintenance yard, that's there for people to be able to come for lunches and so forth, they don't need alcohol, but it's there for their convenience, maybe on the way home from work, so they don't have to drive into town to grab something on their way home. So, just, you know, make it easier for everybody else.
So, you're speaking in favor of?
Yes, sir.
Alcohol beverage sales there?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. I didn't mean to stop you, are you finished with your comments?
I'm gone.
All right, thank you very much. Have another speaker?
Shannon Flannery, also in favor.
All right. Good evening, I got the first name, I didn't hear the last name.
Shannon Flannery.
Welcome.
I'm speaking in favor because if you look at that picture, that very first cul-de-sac, I live right on the other side of that. I love this gas station for the convenience, I don't have to drive into town for anything anymore as soon as that car wash becomes available. I walked there today to buy a pack of cigarettes. I walked there to get soda, to get gas for my lawnmower. And like the owner stated, not selling alcohol, alcohol here will not prevent me from driving to Food for Less or down the street to AMPM, it'll just make it more inconvenient for me. Having it right around the corner, it's a really quick drive, it's a short distance, no major roads, or I could walk there, so I'm definitely in favor of having everything right in that little corner, so we don't have to go into town, get on the freeway, you know, drive down 10th Street West all the way to Lancaster Boulevard. It's definitely something that I'm looking forward to having within walking distance. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. And other speakers?
Yes, we have three opposing, starting with Ken Jones.
All right, Ms. Jones, you're welcome.
My name is Ken Jones, I live on the east side of Lancaster, I am an employee of the Lancaster Baptist Church, and the reason I'm here, first of all, several of our members live in the area. We originally approached the Planning Commission about this market earlier because we were concerned about them having alcohol sales. They assured us that they would not. We were happy with that, we were glad there was gonna be the convenience of a market there where people could shop. Now, because they cannot make the money they thought they would, now they want to put in alcohol sales, which is what they said they would not do when it was originally permitted. Many of the residents in that area that attend our church have approached me because they know our strong stand against alcoholic outlets. There are already several within a mile. We have no opposition to a mini-market, providing food, providing convenience for groceries and gasoline, but the convenience to buy alcoholic beverages is what we object to. Our church runs a large ministry for alcoholics, many of them wish somebody had restricted their hands-on to an alcoholic beverage. There is no convenience, no advantage, there are still liquor stores about a mile away. Yes, they're not within walking distance, but maybe that's because those that want the beverages have already lost their driver's license and are not allowed to drive. So, whatever the case may be, we do not see it as an advantage to have this market to sell liquor, to be a liquor store. And one of the reasons why Lancaster has one of the best alcohol ordinances in the state of California is to prevent establishments like this just cropping up all over the city. We've done a great deal in cleaning up crime, the store has not contributed to the crime, and it will not contribute to the crime if it does not sell alcoholic beverages. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, next speaker, please.
Debriana Jones.
Good evening, and welcome, Ms. Jones.
To clarify, there is no relation, we just happen to share the same last name. I live in that area myself, I'm an educator, I live about four blocks down from this new place, and the reason why I object to it is because the sale of alcohol, to me, is, too rampant as it is. There are two schools where our children, within the neighborhood, where the children come and go, and there's a liquor store on Avenue I, which I can walk to from where I live, and I live four blocks away from where this corner is. Children are very impressionable, teenagers want to make an impression on older people, and to my mind, making alcohol more accessible is a very imprudent thing to do. And so, I am very much against this and for the denial of this permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. And the next speaker, please.
Ray Shavira.
Welcome, Mr. Shavira.
Mr. Chairman, members of the, of the commission, staff, excuse me. May I walk up and give some handouts to staff? With respect to the crime issue, while this location, according to the State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, is not a high-crime area, certainly as yet, the material that I have here from the ABC Department in Van Nuys, which controls this area, indicates that their allowable type 21 or liquor license, beer, wine, and distilled spirits, has already been met. They permit two, in that census tract, two already existing. This would call undue concentration into play, were they to have the matter, should you pass it here, and should it survive the city council? Those are the various passes remaining before the applicant. In the resolution you have before you, in item small C at the top, your staff refers to the protection of the health, safety, and welfare of this community. The item that I've given you comes to me from the county service planning area 1 and 2, medical specialists, the doctor, of a health doctor who is responsible for these two large areas of the county, the San Fernando Valley and the Adlo Valley. While the newspaper, recently, our local newspaper has been carrying articles about how risky it is to live in the Adlo Valley, especially for smoking-related health diseases, what you see there are the latest available figures on the leading causes of premature death in the Adlo Valley. Notice that number one is motor vehicle crashes, usually 40 to 50% alcohol-related. Notice that number one is motor vehicle crashes, usually 40% to 50% alcohol-related. Our death rate because of that, and it's just the death rate, the injury rate is nine times that, is more than twice the county average at this point. It's been coming down. It used to be four times the county average. Notice that causes three, four, and five are all alcohol-related, especially homicide, suicide. You can see the comparison to the, to the San Fernando Valley. I would hope that the broader picture of public health, since city government is also a mini-health department, you are also required to protect the public safety, health, and welfare. In the case of ABC, it also includes peace and morals, that you take a more global view of how one more addition, especially in a venue that mixes drinking and driving, it's a gas station, may well affect the public health and safety here seriously in years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavira. Do we have any other speakers? Do we have any other speakers?
No, we do not.
All right. Thank you. All right then, without objection, the public hearing is closed. And do we have any comments from staff or questions from the Commission? Comments? Anyone?
Mr. Voss, the applicant, had asked, he'd like to respond to the comments.
I've closed the public hearing. Is it your pleasure to hear from the applicant? Folks, you want to reopen the public hearing? Anyone want to reopen the public hearing? I'll reopen the public hearing. If you want to rebut, go right ahead. You've got three minutes. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Three minutes.
Thank you. Two years ago, when I presented, I was here to give a presentation. I was asked a question whether we planned to sell alcohol. I said no. Can we go back to the slides, please? The other one? At that time, we did not anticipate such a severe economic downturn. We have about two-thirds of the shopping center is closed right now. As far as my quote, it is correct, but at that time, the Director of Planning also said that legally, we have the right to apply for, that could not stop us. We could still apply for alcohol license. So that was also in the memo, in the minutes. The school location, I don't see any school close to our location. I think they are closer to the alcohol-serving stores on Avenue I, to the best of my knowledge. And I truly hope I asked you not to consider the demographic of a neighborhood when decision is made regarding selling alcohol. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. All right then. Are we done? Any further speakers? Ms. Donovan?
No.
All right then. So without objection, the public hearing is closed for the second time. We may have some questions of staff. Ms. Harvey, did you have a question? No? All right. So, staff recommendation indicates that as a primary off-sale of alcohol beverage in a mini-market with gasoline sales, it does require a conditional use permit, which is a discretionary approval on behalf of the Commission. Secondly, the proximity to the residential neighborhood, the application does not fall within the, within the approval recommendation of the ordinance. Is that correct?
Would you repeat the question, please? Sorry.
Based on the proximity of the application of the use, in the proximity to the residential neighborhood, it does, it does not fall within the recommended approval of the ordinance.
That is correct.
So, it is true that the applicant, any applicant can apply for a conditional use permit for this type of a use in this zone. However, since it, since it's in adjacent to residential property, staff has really no choice but to recommend denial. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. However, it's still discretionary on the part of the Commission. If we can make a finding, and what would be our finding if, if we chose to make an approval? I don't know either, but that's, maybe that's not a fair question, because I can't come up with any either. All right. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments? All right.
I did want to make one comment, if I could. My concern with this project is if we decide to recommend approving alcohol here, that we have created precedent that would be looked upon in the future and could create decisions in the future that would be, in my opinion, negative in impact. And so I'm not only looking at this project, I'm also looking at the future of Lancaster and, and that area. And I'm putting that into consideration. I just wanted to verbalize it.
If you look at the history of the, the Alcohol Beverage Control Ordinance, which originally started, gosh, a long time ago, as a guideline, there was always a concern with the proximity of primary alcohol beverage sales adjacent to residential zones. And that was always a concern of the folks who drafted the guidelines, and then ultimately, when the ordinance was put in place in this city some years ago. And it's not the first time. It's probably, it's the first time, I think, this Commission has heard this type of an application. But it's certainly not the first time an application of this type has been before a Commission or the city council. I don't recall any of them being approved, however, so, at any rate. So, who's making the motion here?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 10-13, denying conditional use permit Number 10-04.
I will second that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next item is item number seven, which is Conditional Use Permit Number 10-05, Lancaster Promenade The public hearing is open on this matter, and can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chairman Voss and Commissioners. The applicant is requesting the construction of a 23,375 square foot, three-story mixed-use building for an independent movie theater, office space, bookstore, café, including onsite sale and consumption of alcohol, beer, and wine in conjunction with the movie theater. The construction of a mixed-use building containing the three-screen movie theater would include 160 seats, which would span the first and second floors. The larger screening room would accommodate 64 persons and would include a 36-person stage. The other uses proposed include a café for the first floor, a two-story bookstore, office space for the third floor. On sale alcohol sales and consumption are proposed in conjunction with the movie theater. A conditional use permit is required in the downtown-specific plan for a movie theater and for alcohol sales. The proposed three-story building and proposed uses would enhance and fulfill the vision of the downtown-specific plan. The plan showed the project built-to-property line for the, for the front interior and street side and rear property lines. Parking would be provided on off-site in the public parking lots to the south of the project, as well as the parallel parking on Lancaster Boulevard, future parking on the Rambus on Lancaster Boulevard, and the proposed reconfiguration of Big Avenue with angled parking and street planners as well that would need council action. The city supports the Park One's concepts with the downtown Lancaster-specific plan, which is designed to reduce traffic congestion and promote stops on foot rather than driving from one destination to another. The applicant has indicated to staff the approval of the conditional use permit is important to the timing of the proposed theater use, as well as the access to funding sources for the project. Due to the time restrictions, the elevations are not available for review at this time. Staff is recommending that the elevations be returned to the Planning Director for review in conformance with the downtown Lancaster-specific plan. The Director would transmit the elevations to the Planning Commission for their convenient concurrence. The proposed conditional use permit would establish office space, bookstore, café, independent movie theater, and offer onsite alcohol sales that would provide services that are not currently available in the downtown Lancaster. The project is in conformance with the General Plan Policy 16.4, which states, "Promote the revitalization of downtown Lancaster as an urban center of the Adalo Valley, creating a mix of cultural, recreational, social, economic, and residential activities." Hours of operation for the establishment would generally be from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, and from 11:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. Friday through Sa- Sa- excuse me, Sunday. Staff is recommending that the Commission approve the request, subject to the proposed conditions of the project, based on the site having sufficient area to accommodate the proposed theater development, as the request for alcohol, adequate access, services being available for the use, and the lack of significant adverse effects on the surrounding area. Staff believes that this project would bring a unique building to Lancaster Boulevard and set an example for future projects in the area to follow. Therefore, staff is recommending to the Commission approval of Conditional Use Permit Number 1005. I'll be happy to answer. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Donovan. You indicated in the next-to-last paragraph on page four, 1:30 p.m. Friday through Sunday. I'm assuming that's 1:30 a.m.
You are correct. It should be a.m.
Yeah, you know. Okay. All right. So with that correction, let's just remind ourselves that we've received a revised resolution and a revised staff report, which you just presented to us, the revised resolution.
And we'd also need to amend Condition Number 12 to reflect the a.m.
Right. Okay. Thank you. The only, the reason that the project is before us as a conditional use permit is because of the, the onsite sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages, as well as the theater element?
That's correct. The, the specific plan requires theaters to come before the Planning Commission.
As a discretionary approval. However, the, the design elements and process is primarily with staff under this downtown-specific plan. There's, there are specific requirements under this specific plan that the applicant must conform to, to meet minimum standards for design and many other elements, notwithstanding these, these two, the two reasons this is before us tonight. So what you're suggesting, if I understand you correctly, is, is the recommendation to approve the conditional use permit so the applicant can move the project along, get his financing in place, and conform to the application process of the downtown-specific plan as far as the design element and all those other requirements, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So, do, do we have, does the applicant care to address this tonight? Not obliged to unless you like, unless you want to. Mr. Erlich, welcome.
I will need a speaker card.
Can I fill it out after as well, please? My name is Scott Erlich. I'm a partner in inside development. I'm obviously for this development. I think adding what we have envisioned here, I heard all the concerns on the alcohol, and alcohol is not a primary goal of selling in, in, in the theaters. It's, it's pretty, it's a convenience. And what our game plan is, is to provide, to provide an experience, as opposed to just going to the movie. And what we envision as part of the alcohol consumption would be similar to if you're going to the Hollywood Bowl and you were going to order a basket, and our seats are going to be three times as large as the regular seats. And, and so the alcohol is really only in, to be used in, inside the, I can't even speak tonight. It's, Bex is killing me right now, so I apologize. So the alcohol would, that's, is part of the package. I mean, that's really our, our main idea of the alcohol. The bookstore, the theater, again, just ways to bring people to the Boulevard and to spend a lot longer as part of the whole Boulevard experience. So, and as far as the design and with staff, we have a great track record. I've never thought of these projects as my projects. They're our projects jointly. I think staff knows that whatever we jointly want is what ends up coming. So I have no concern whatsoever on the aesthetics of it. I guarantee you it will be the highest-end theater, anywhere close in 100-mile radius at least, and bookstore. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
I'm curious, the experience that you're talking about, I wouldn't mind getting just a tad more details about it. Are the meals going to be served inside the theater area?
The, the meals are not going to be prepared inside the, what we envision is, is going online and ordering, again, very similar, if you've ever been to Hollywood Bowl inside, they, you can order online, and they'll have a variety of different picnic baskets. And it will be what we envision and what the, would be to come in 30 minutes prior to the movie starting, and they would be showing short films, just entertaining things that people could be speaking through, as opposed to when the movie starts. So that's the experience we're talking about, is making a complete night of it, assigned seating so you can go through the bookstore. Nothing like the experience, and no offense to Cinemark, but where you have to get there an hour early, that's not what we're trying to do. And if you've noticed, our theaters are extremely small, high-end, and in fact, why we put a stage on there is what we would love to bring is an El Capitan experience, which is a Hollywood experience where they may have the Christmas Carol, and they have acting, Disney brings acting stages, acting people as part of the, the theater. And so it's, it's more 3D effect, just overall experience. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. I appreciate your comments. And I, I would just like to say, and it's, and please don't take this as a criticism, it's an observation from someone who is involved and has been involved with a lot of construction through a lot of years and a lot of public works. And I have some personal concerns about the, the ultimate finish work on projects. And there is no mechanism that I know of in our system here in the community to control that. But I've noticed what I would consider some concerns regarding the, the finish of a project. Sometimes in the rush to get it open and, and to get it online and, and to satisfy the desires of people up the food chain, sometimes that, some things get missed, little things. But in the long run, over the, over the life of a project, it turns into a preventative maintenance problem, and I, and I just offer that as a comment, and not really as a criticism, but more as a comment about any project in our community. But we're very concerned about our downtown, and you've, you've certainly added a wonderful investment to our community, certainly. On a large number of projects, hopefully, they're all very successful. And I look forward to this opportunity and to go online and, and order my picnic basket, the first opportunity that we have. So, thank you.
If I can actually just address- If I can actually just address that, there is nobody, or there is nobody, I don't want to be a double negative, in this community or any community that a finish of a project bugs more than myself. And I will be the first to tell you that our projects aren't done until they're done, and I will paint a building four times because it's not the right color paint, and I don't get any more money or any less money. So your constructive criticisms, please share with staff, because I could tell you it bugs me to no end as well. And I'm getting better at it, but you're correct. As we go, we've finished to go on to ninety-eight percent, and they're not done. And we go back, and we will finish. But please share with staff, and again, I'm here to work with you and help me, because that's- there's no way that I take that as an insult whatsoever.
Well, I don't know. I don't- I hope you don't take it as a-.
Well, I'm saying that it's a good thing, and please share with staff if you do have concerns.
Well, there's really no mechanism in- from the city side. I mean, it's really the developer's responsibility to ultimately- I mean, it's your investment ultimately in that. But, you know, these are quasi-public facilities, really, so they should have, you know, a fifty, seventy-five year life, certainly.
And that's- again, there is a mechanism. Just ask.
Yeah.
Ask if you don't- I mean, I'm- all right, that's the mechanism, and if I can do it, I think staff will back me up wholeheartedly on this one. I will do it because it bugs me as well, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
One last comment, Scott, if you don't mind. Just a little bit more specific is, as I was looking at the drawings, I got- by the way, I love the project, okay? I can't wait to see this thing come to fruition, if it moves forward, certainly. But as I look at the drawings, the east side and the south side of the building are very commercial-looking, in my opinion, and I'm wondering how we get from where we are to improved design on those sides of the building.
I concur completely and candidly. When I saw it, those were rushed there, and I never looked at those. And staff will tell you as well. I was appalled by the pictures I've seen. Since then, we have- we are in the process of upgrading to what I think will look good, and we will work directly with staff. We will bring it back to you, and again, suggestions, please. But the design that now that I've come up with, I think eliminates that, eliminates your concern on that. It was bad. I mean, that first picture was scary to me. I mean, it was nothing that I'd seen until we walked into the staff's office, and it was horrible. So I concur.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you very much. Do we have any other speakers on this?
I believe it's Josh Mann.
Mr. Mann, good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Chairman Boles and members of the planning commission. It's very exciting for me to be in front of you this evening as the president of the Boulevard Association, representing the approximately one hundred and seventy-five businesses of downtown Lancaster. We've talked so much over these past several months about the public investment in downtown, and I applaud you as a commission for really seeing the vision and approving the downtown specific plan and the elements of the streetscape design that are now under construction. And I guess what I wanted people to see now is that for this public investment that we made, we're now able to attract private investment dollars into really building this cultural and entertainment hub for downtown Lancaster and for the entire Annalou Valley to enjoy. This particular project is really key for me in the fact that I love movies, and you can't get a lot of the ones that aren't big-budget, action flick, you know, five-hundred-million-dollar budgets to the Annalou Valley. Those independent films, those ones that are definitely do well at the Oscars but have not been able to make it up here. And so to have a project come forward like this, I think it's going to add an entirely new cultural dimension that we don't have here in the Annalou Valley, and it's going to become another one of those central hubs, those focal points right here in downtown. And I- for those of you who are able to go to the Planters Institute in Monterey, this very project exists there. It's the OZIO. I would go there weekend after weekend. And to be able to have these elements brought together, it's one of those things we talk about, the sale of beer and wine. You know, I got to enjoy wine while watching Sideways, and it just- it's a whole experience that Scott is trying to bring forward with this project. And so I look for your support, and hopefully we'll all get to go and enjoy a movie together. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
No other speakers.
All right. Thank you. So then, without objection, the public hearing is closed. And any questions or comments from anyone?
I'd just like to ask staff right now, as far as the logistics or the design elements of the building, explain to me the process as far as approval for that. That goes through staff, correct?
It would go to staff, but to meet the downtown specific plan, all the requirements, but it would be brought before you for concurrence.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? All right, then. What's your pleasure on this matter?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number one zero dash one four approving conditional use permit number one zero dash zero five.
I second that. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any further questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Very good. Thank you. All right, then. The next item is item number eight, conditional use permit one zero dash zero nine. This is a conditional use permit for onsite sale, consumption of alcohol, type forty-one, sale of beer and wine in a bona fide restaurant for an existing restaurant. And we have received a letter of concurrence from the applicant. Yes. From Gurney Tamale Cafe. All right. So anyone care to hear a staff report on this matter? None? All right. Public hearing is open on this. Do we have anyone wishing to speak to us tonight?
No speaker cards.
All right, then. Last opportunity. Anyone care to speak on this matter? Hearing none? Without objection, then, the public hearing is closed, and we'll consider the recommendation. What's your pleasure?
I'll move that we adopt resolution number ten sixteen approving conditional use permit number one zero zero nine.
Thank you. Have a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any further questions or comments? Please vote. Very good. Thank you. All right. Item number nine is a public hearing, continued public hearing, actually, on the citywide- well, no, it's not. It's a new public hearing because we have a new element. Citywide rezoning, draft zoning map, mixed-use ordinance, public open space, and special-purpose zone ordinance. So the public hearing is open on this matter, and we'll hear a staff report on this.
Good evening, Chairman Boles, commissioners. Last year in July two thousand and nine, the city adopted a new general plan, and as a result, staff has initiated several efforts to bring the city zoning in compliance with the new general plan. These include a new citywide Lancaster zoning map, the zoning ordinance for the mixed-use zones, which are new zones, and they don't exist on the ninety-seven Lancaster zoning map, and also the zoning ordinance for the open space, public, and special-purpose zones. So we have the slide on the zoning maps. And although there's only one combined staff report for these recommendations, there are three separate resolutions, each of which requires a vote. So what I can do is break up the presentation into three parts and/or however you decide to do it, you can hear the entire staff report for all three items and then take three separate actions, or I can do each component separately.
Since we've heard two of the three staff reports twice, and we've heard it in our planning session, I wonder if you just give us a brief overview, and if anyone has any questions, I'm sure they'll pose them. Just a very brief overview.
Sure. The- you have the zoning map before you, and this, we bring it before to comply with the ninety-seven general plan. The zoning map is more specific than the general plan for- it shows the different zoning districts, each prescribing regulations for each land use. And we need to do this to be in compliance with state law and so that we can move forward with having regulations for specific zones. The second component is the mixed-use ordinance. The new general plan has a mixed-use land use, and the zoning map shows three new mixed-use zones, mixed-use neighborhood, mixed-use commercial, and mixed-use employment. And you also have in your packet the mixed-use zones, which are the standards for development. If someone were to come forward and to propose a project in the mixed-use zones, we drafted standards and regulations for mixed-use developments, and they're drafted in a way that will promote quality design, they will promote infill development, and all the good things that the city strives to do for a sustainable community. The last component is the open space, public, and special-purpose zones, and that's really more just a cleanup effort. When we drafted the new zoning map, we cleaned up the categories so that uses such as schools, public uses, they're clarified on the new zoning map. So the open space, public, special-purpose zones has been cleaned up to reflect the clarification on the new map. There's no new information per se, just the reshuffling of information. And this concludes my concise staff report.
Thank you, sir. All right. This is a public hearing, and we have three recommendations before us. Do we have any speakers on this matter?
None.
None. All right. Going once, going twice, no speakers. All right. Then, without objection, we'll close the public hearing. And thank you very much for putting this together over the last several months. This- we've heard this a number of times. We've had study sessions on it and appreciate your work on it. Quite an effort. It's been, what, fifteen years since the city zoning map has been updated, about?
Yeah, the last zoning map was back in nineteen ninety-seven.
Yeah, so it's been quite a while.
Yeah.
Been quite a while, that's for sure. And we hope it's perfect. At any rate, but do appreciate your efforts on this and the efforts of all the staff involved. Thank you very much. So what's your pleasure, folks? We have three resolutions, so they would require an action on each one separately.
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution number ten seventeen recommending to the city council approval of the citywide Lancaster zoning map, exhibit A.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Number two?
I make a motion to adopt resolution number one zero one eight recommending to the city council approval to include the mixed-use zoning ordinance, exhibit B, title seventeen, chapter ten to the Lancaster municipal code.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Further questions, comments? Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. And number three?
I move we adopt resolution number one zero one nine recommending to the city council approval of amendment of amendment to the open space, public, and special-purpose zoning ordinance, exhibit C, title seventeen, chapter twenty to the Lancaster municipal code.
I second that.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any further questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Director's announcements?
I don't have any.
All right. Thank you. Anyone on our commission have any items they'd like to discuss this evening? All right. Comes time now for public business from the floor on non-agendized items. This portion of the agenda allows an individual the opportunity to address the commission on any subject regarding city business. Under state legislation, no action can be taken on non-agenda items. Members of the public should be aware of this when addressing the commission regarding items not specifically referenced on the agenda. If you would please complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary, individuals would be limited to three minutes each. Do we have a speaker?
Yes, we do. Richard Holmes.
Mr. Holmes? Evening, and welcome.
Good evening, council. My name is Richard, and I'm here regarding, not really a planned matter, but it's a matter with the redevelopment agency, and I'm hoping that you guys can be in conjunction with them to solve this matter. But basically, I've received maybe around seven or ten of these notices on my door. All I can- all I know is it doesn't say Lancaster Redevelopment Agency on here, but I've got at least three of them that said Lancaster Redevelopment Agency. And when I do get these notices, it's like a crisis to me. And, you know, the person I tried to reach out to, his name is Jim from the Lancaster Redevelopment Agency, and he's never returned my call. So I'm here before the council because, you know, I understand when renewing the lease, maybe once a year, come inspect my apartment, but, you know, if I'm getting a notice, I've been there twenty-three months, and I've maybe got fifteen notices, we're going to come inspect the apartment. And it's like, you know, I need an outlet, you know? I'm here before the city council asking if there's something that you guys can do regarding, you know, this matter, because, you know, I just got a notice today. This is why I'm here. If I didn't get a notice saying that they were going to come inspect my place, then I wouldn't be here. I typed in Lancaster Redevelopment Agency, and it was a link to the planning commission. So this is why I'm here.
Is- are you finished with the comments?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Yeah, this is not the city council. This is the planning commission, and I would refer you to, if it's from the redevelopment agency to the redevelopment agency, they're open from in the morning, and they're upstairs in this building. So you can avail yourself of visiting with anybody at that public counter right upstairs, all right? Thank you. All right, then. Anything further?
No.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Anything from the commission? All right, then.
Would you mind if I just make a quick comment?
You can say anything you want.
I would love to. Thank you. I believe tonight is my last night on the planning commission, so I just wanted to thank my fellow commissioners and also the city staff. This experience for me has been an extremely positive experience, and I am grateful for the experience, and I'm in awe of the character and the type of people that I've been able to associate with over the last two years, from Cassie to Dana to Raj, Dan, and vice chair- to Dana to Raj, um, Dan and Vice Chair Sandy and Chairman Jim Vos. Um, six of the most professional people I've ever worked with on any project in my life and it's been a pleasure to work with you the last two years. Um, I've been amazed at not just the professionalism of the city staff, including Joe Adams, um, Chune, love your reports and the work that you put into your stuff. Marion, we had dinner together last night and I didn't even know it, we were at the same restaurant last night. Um, Joy Reyes, you've just been a lifesaver in so many situations. If there's a question about anything, just call Joy and she figures it out. Um, Carlisle, pleasure working with you, very professional. Sylvia, amazing. Uh, the passion you put into your work is just amazing to me. And then, Mr. Ludicki, Brian Ludicki, um, he is an amazing man. Um, he knows more about planning than anybody I have ever met in my life and he is so humble and so willing to listen, to take criticism, to allow the planning commission to make decisions that quite honestly, I believe sometimes he thinks, what in the world are you guys doing? I learned after a short period of time that whenever I was in conflict with something that Brian had to say, I had to stop and ask him, "Brian, why do you think that?" And then he would explain it and it would make perfect sense. The individuals that I worked with, both on the planning commission and the city, are servant leaders. Um, I would describe you all as selfless, competent, accountable, thorough, visionary, independent thinkers, which is incredibly important to me, um, studious. Um, the one project, we had three thousand pages to read through and everybody on this commission read them all. And that's, that's amazing to me. Passionate and compassionate, um, dependable, professional, and most importantly to me, full of integrity. And so, it's been an honor and a, a true pleasure, Jim. I've, uh, loved watching your leadership. You are a very competent, able leader and, um, I think you did an outstanding job and fellow commissioners, um, my sincere gratitude of working with you. Thank you very, very much.
Can I say something?
You may, go right ahead.
Um, when we were, uh, at the conference in Monterey, we knew that you weren't going to reapply and Raj and I were going to fill out an application on your behalf and reapply in your name. And then we decided, well, that probably wouldn't be too honest, so we decided not to do it because we really hate that you're not gonna be with us. Because we've enjoyed being with you just as much as you apparently have enjoyed working with us and it's gonna be a tremendous loss to our commission to lose you.
Well, thank you, that's very kind and I, I do wanna make sure it's very clear that I have loved this experience, I've enjoyed it and I would love to continue and there are other things that both my family and personally I would need to do and I, I'm very careful with my time, especially family time and church and, and other things that I'm, are involved with. So, I thoroughly enjoyed it, wish I could continue to fit it into my personal schedule, um, but it's time for me to move on and you guys, it's in really, really good hands, so I have no problem with moving on.
Very kind words, uh, Larry Burkey. Very kind of you to say the things you've said. Um, I, I for one certainly appreciate your involvement and your thoroughness and, um, what I, one of the things I admire about you most is that, um, you don't often have a great deal to say, but when you do have something to say, it certainly is on point and, and, uh, folks pay attention. Um, I for one am, uh, sorry that you're not continuing on the commission, assuming, who knows, even the rest of us may or may not be. Um, since, uh, we've been obliged to reapply, um, uh, the mayor's had asked us to do that and since the, uh, election, then, um, uh, who knows what the mayor's going to decide to do relative to the appointments on any of the commissions. But I for one, uh, will miss your, uh, involvement and, uh, your wise counsel, that's for sure. And, uh, and certainly not the least of which, uh, the opportunity that you share with us, uh, most meeting days with the invocations that you offer. Um, I certainly will miss that. Thank you. So, without objection then, we stand adjourned to the re- uh, to the Monday, May tenth, two thousand and ten, five-thirty PM in the planning large conference room here at City Hall. Thank you very much.